Like an HCC appeal.
They've been with us the whole time. Gabriella Burnham.
Oh, she's today?
She was. Did you have her? You did not. I knew her when she was a little girl. I lived down in Wisconsin. Spent a lot of time.
Don't see them come walking in.
Sit down. Should we ask Stephen Moore?
Yeah.
Stephen Moore, is your mother Stephen coming?
I don't know. We don't, we don't speak all the time, but.
Coordinate your schedules.
Coordinate our wardrobes.
I think just start then. All right, I just want to say that um, I'm gonna mute everyone who has come in, with the exception of the people that have been part of the group. So if you suddenly get muted, that's me.
Good evening, all. Welcome to the Select Board Short Term Rental Subcommittee for Thursday, June 13th at 6:00 PM. I'll call to order at 6:01 PM. Couple housekeeping things. So to anybody tonight who was expecting public comment, I apologize, but this has been a fluid, a fluid discussion with myself and my colleague Malcolm on what the progress the group was making and how that was gonna work. So, so we decided to not do public comment tonight, but Tuesday at 6:00 on Zoom will be all public comment. So we will, that, the entire session. And so we'll plow through tonight for the two hours and then do public comment on Tuesday from 6:00 to 8:00 on Zoom. And then on the Thursday meeting, I think it will be, it will be the group and we'll do final comments. And any, if the groups have want to comment on any public comment and et cetera, and then we can move forward from there. And then kind of at the end of that meeting, the article as far as it's gotten at that point will be submitted to myself and Malcolm to deliver to the Select Board for, for discussion of a potential warrant article on the special town meeting bar. So with that, I see Town Council's on. I also see Ms. Perrin is on to discuss her general bylaw. She is going to go first this evening as she has a, a time issue that she needs to leave early. So I think we'll start with Pamela's article and some comments and then we'll go back to the agenda, so to speak, with the composite short-term rental zoning bylaw that Town Council has written up with placeholders. Pamela, I'm gonna give the floor to you, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. And Erica, would you have my warrant article on the screen so people can see it? Perfect, perfect. And if you could scroll down to the body, to the text there. Okay, yeah, so I am the proponent of this article. Let me start out by saying I do not own or operate an STR. And as far as I know, neither has anyone else in my family in the 90 years we have been here. And I'll have a comment about that later. One of the things that everybody seems to agree on is that we do not want commercial, investment-driven, short-term rentals on Nantucket. And by investment-driven, I don't mean a property owned by someone with ties to Nantucket that is rented. I mean one that is just a property that happens to be on Nantucket in a portfolio owned and operated by a business whose sole objective is to return income to its investors. Now, we adopted Article 60 last month to try to prohibit that type of investment-driven business. But when I reread the article we passed, I found some major flaws through a glitch in the drafting. My article makes Article 60 work as we intended it to. I'm a retired tax and pension lawyer, and I've done a fair amount of work with investment managers and businesses. They want access to where the money is, which is the trillions of dollars stored in tax-advantaged retirement plans. So they have to work with us pension lawyers because our laws are very protective of those dollars. And to be as protective of Nantucket from these investment dollars, we need to define some terms better. First, as you will, if you will look at the definition of corporation and look at this, this text that I have stricken out, this is what we originally voted for in Article 60. And to me, the definition is a little bit strange in the eyes of a tax lawyer. U.S. corporations are excluded, but not corporations from China, for example. And enforcement requires us to know the incorporation laws of all other states. Do we really want to spend our legal dollars this way? Second, if you could scroll down, we did not exclude investment partnerships. And so I have a definition of that. These are the types of entities typically used by private equity hedge funds and similar less regulated entities. And it didn't prohibit real estate investment trusts, commonly called REITs, which are mutual funds that invest in and operate real estate properties. As a general rule, for tax reasons, real estate investment dollars will more typically flow into partnerships and REITs than a corporation. In a corporation, both the business and the investors pay taxes on their earnings. But in a partnership or REIT, the businesses don't pay taxes on their earnings. Only the investors do. So you will generally find partnerships and REITs as a more common form of business structure for real estate investments, unless they are on a very large scale. So to fix Article 60, we need a better definition, definition, excuse me, of corporation and good definitions for partnerships and REITs. So I went looking for some, and guess where I found them? On Broad Street, in the land bank. Its rules have definitions that are sophisticated, extensive, professional, and relevant to STR regulation. I was impressed. My article adopts the land bank's definition of corporation and protects the carve-out that we adopted in Article 60 for family and estate planning trusts. The definition of a partnership comes directly from the land bank regs also, while the definition of a REIT comes from my personal favorite, the Internal Revenue Code. I hope this article is passed because these are good definitions. They've been used by the land bank and the Internal Revenue Code successfully for decades. We understand what they mean. In the article you may be drafting, many concepts will need to be defined. It will be critical to have good definitions.
Thank you.
Especially legacy properties and property purchases and sales. If not done right, lawyers will be busy looking for ambiguities and loopholes and trying to adjust property ownership to look like it fits within the new law, even if it really doesn't. That's just what lawyers are paid to do. Or you may find that within the law you thought was just fine, it's full of Trojan horses. So I strongly suggest that any article you write adopt existing land bank regulations wherever possible, regulations and definitions. For example, they define who is a purchaser, what is a real property interest, who is a seller, what is the time of a transfer of a property interest, and so on. We shouldn't bake this cake from scratch. Nantucket needs to speak with one voice in its real estate laws so that lawyers can't arbitrage one definition against another in litigation. And I'd like to close by just making one further point, coming from a family of non-SDR owners. SDR owners have been far more vocal than we have on this issue. My inbox is getting very cluttered with very long emails from them. I get it that they are trying to protect their income stream. But let's not decide whose interests come first on that basis or on someone's personal story. Let's not draft laws where profits trump the property rights of non-SDR owners. We, non-SDR owners, are the silent majority here, and you will need us to get to yes. So I'd be happy to take any questions on my article.
Thank you, Pamela. Any questions from the three groups for Pamela?
I appreciate the thought, but maybe this is a question for Pamela or, and John, Giorgio. I, I, I fear that those definitions would wrap up essentially, one of the most common things we have here is intergenerational trusts. There's so many properties where someone buys it and then leave it to their kids and their grandkids. And when you get to that second or third generation, they rent it out to pay the taxes and, you know, whatever. And those are often, they're almost always partnerships and trusts. So I, I.
This article does not even touch those. This article is only going after the investment-driven trust by the major type of commercial entity. Does not, it does not deal with family or estate planning trusts because it includes the, the very language that we adopted in Article 60. I did not change that.
How would the town know the difference?
Because you go to the land bank filings. The land bank really has a handle on real estate transactions in this community.
So, yeah, but the land bank filings are private and protected by state law under, from FOIA. You can't, that information is not public information.
We can, we can find a way.
Absolutely, absolutely cannot. It is protected under state law and exempted from FOIA. It is not, can I see your files?
I think we could find a way to coordinate.
You would need a state law change.
I disagree.
Well, if you can, okay.
I think we can work with the land bank.
I'm gonna get the idea, but I think you're wrapping up, I think you're wrapping up family trusts and other trusts for creating a burden that would be nearly impossible for the town to, to distinguish. I don't know how someone at the board of health is gonna tell the difference between one trust and one partnership and the other.
Well, you're not.
I just think, I just think, I, I guess, John, do you have an objection on this?
Gonna unmute myself. So um, I, I certainly appreciate what Pamela's trying to do here. I'm, I guess a question I would have is, is this a solution in search of a problem? And I don't know the answer to that question. I, I drafted, when I, when I dealt with Article 60, I struggled with the, this issue of how to define corporations. And I thought that the best way to do that was to basically refer back to state law. I don't know, I mean, how many REITs are there on Nantucket that are short-term renting? Does anybody know the answer to that question?
We have the data and have just begun to analyze it, but it would surprise me very greatly if there were none. I'm, my real target here is the partnerships. That is where the money is coming from. They are opaque structures. We don't know who owns them. We don't know where the money comes from. And those are most likely to be the type of investments in the short-term rentals we do not want to have. Those are not family businesses, family holdings. These are the big boys in finance investing in Nantucket. And I invite you just to take a drive and take a look at 27 Cato Lane, which is on a one-half acre lot just beyond Nausicaä. Half-acre lot, 10-bedroom house with eight bathrooms coming in, a pool in the middle, and then what's going to happen on the other half of the lot? These are not properties. You cannot tell where the money's coming from this, to buy this. These are not gonna be family properties. These are purely investment-driven entities, and those are the ones I'm trying to exclude from this island.
So if I look at your definition of partnership, it's any entity where they're taxable as a partnership. So now we need to get people to disclose their tax status. And so first of all, I can think of several clients that I have that are essentially families that have their family investments as limited partnerships. Aside from that, my understanding is nearly every business entity out there, an LLC is included, is taxable as a partnership. Almost no one elects taxable as a corporation. So I think you would wrap up everything if I'm reading.
I disagree. And what I'm strongly urging against is any invented definition purely for short-term rentals.
If I'm an LLC and I'm taxed as a partnership, am I covered under your definition?
I will tell you that if you don't have a standard definition, such as the one in the land bank regulations, that we are at risk for lawyers from big law firms, and I've worked in three of them, who will be coming in and exploiting whatever we write in that is not standard language. So that is what I'm also trying to avoid, is having the major law firms come in as the clients of these large investment entities, finding ways to exploit what we do right, which is why I strongly urge that you'd use a good definition, which I found in the land bank regs. Now, perhaps you can find a good professional regulation somewhere else, and I'd be happy to consider it. But I strongly urge you not to try one from scratch.
So, I don't want to go back and forth, but Pamela, I think your, your concept of trying to avoid investment vehicles is not generally objectionable, but I think your language actually covers 99% of business entities. Because I can't think of any client I've had in 20 years who's allowed to be taxed as a corporation. That means they're all allowed to be taxed as a partnership, whether it's a trust or a LLC. So you're, I don't disagree with your goal, but I think that this, like, slammed the door on every business and trust entity that I can think of.
Well, I disagree.
Well, I wonder what town.
The point of it is that it's a pooling of funds from investors. These are intended to leave the family homes, the family residences alone.
You could think of here, anybody.
Perhaps you can, perhaps you can suggest some other language. I'd be happy to consider it. But it has to be very strong and very tough, and I'd like to have an opinion from council that they would work, that it would work as we intended to work. And not try to just fly with one that we created on our own.
I'm gonna go Grant.
Pamela, if I may.
John, please.
If I may, Pamela, as I said at the outset, I certainly understand your, your goal here. And I am generally more than happy to consider tightening up the language of corporations, et cetera, and adding real estate investment trusts, but I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm hesitating about including the partnership language.
Well, that's where the money is. So you have to come up with a solution to that problem, perhaps.
I don't have to come up with, I don't have to come up with any solution, Pamela, with all due respect. I, I want to know what is the scope of the problem when it comes to partnerships? And if you're just now starting to analyze the data, maybe, maybe this is something that we should put off until we have a better understanding of what the problem is. Rather than, rather than, you know, I'm sorry, but you keep interrupting. I want to know what the solution is that you're, the problem is that you're trying to solve. And I respect Stephen's experience on representing all sorts of different entities on, on Nantucket. And I'm, I would certainly listen to him when it comes to issues such as, are you sweeping up unintentionally perhaps too many partnerships on the, you know, that, that are common vehicles on the island that families use. And, you know, I, I don't know that we're gonna be able to solve this now in time for the September town meeting, but I am always wary of unintended consequences. I guess that's the way I would put it.
Yeah, Pamela, I might make a suggestion, and it's not my area of expertise, but there are probably specific types of entities that we could be banning that might fall into this, that, that use more specific definitions. Maybe they're registered in a certain way or whatever, you know, like a REIT, a true REIT, I think is probably something that has a definition that we, that most people would agree we could ban, you know, but just to say, any entity that's taxable as a partnership, you're, you're, that's basically every trust and LLC on Nantucket is a, is a, is essentially a partnership. And to say anything, and to rely on getting land bank data that we know we can't get and to rely, and to require tax data that we can't get, I think, I, I think that it's, it's a tiny problem that needs a tiny, very specific solution and should wrap up 97% of the, of the entities. Your goal, I think, is great. Your solution, I don't think works.
Grant.
Just to get a non-lawyer into this conversation, through you to the proponent, are we looking, Pamela, to to pull this into the Select Board's recommendation, or are you more interested in getting the language cleaned up in your article to just sort of bring it to town meeting on your own?
I will bring it to town meeting on my own.
Yes, Jim.
Yes, thanks. Through Tom, to you, Pamela. Quick question. Under your rewritten language, are LLCs that refer to natural persons still allowed into STR?
Absolutely. It's under the definition of corporation after provided, however. As you can see, let's see if I can go down.
Not if they elect to be taxed as a partnership, which 99% of them do.
Well, that's, we don't have a law about that now. All we have is corporations. All the only definition in Article 60, as we adopted it, was corporations. And in the, what, if you could go, Erica, can you just scroll down to the bottom? Okay.
I'd suggest that nearly every LLC on Nantucket is a partnership under that definition.
I've heard, yes.
So, if I, if I may, Pamela and Stephen, would as a compromise, Pamela, would you be willing to consider not including the partnership concept in this definition, but change the definition for corporations and real estate investment trusts? And leave for another day this issue of partnerships?
I think that would be a mistake, but I'm happy to review any language that Stephen would like, or you would like to come up with.
Well, I think, I think what we would be talking about at this point is perhaps taking out the term partnership from, from your definitions and from your Section 3, and just leave it as corporations, real estate investment trusts, or other similar entity which pools funds from investors and is engaged primarily in investment activity. Stephen, would that work for you?
Well, it, it, it's certainly better, but I think the real estate investment trust definition is difficult because it basically says anybody who pools their money primarily gain, engaged in investment activity. And I don't know how the town would judge that.
The, the real estate investment.
From a tax point of view, I get it. From a tax, but from a investment, from a border health point of view, how the hell do they know? I would suggest that there are probably registrations and licenses and certificates for REITs and other things that we could get into. It's not my area of expertise by far, but, but I guess that this, that language also seems overly broad, and it involves making an assessment by someone who's not qualified to make that assessment, nor, and it's impossible. Like, how does, how does John Henning know if someone is primarily engaged in investment?
And the reason I put in any similar entity which pools funds from investors, et cetera, et cetera, is because these types of entities are created from time to time, and I wanted to make sure that we look forward, and we, we didn't have just a rigid activity, rigid definition that we would have to go back to town meeting and revise in the future. I think what my language does is make any new entity, and it's like ice cream, new flavors are always being invented, make any new entity come and ask for an exemption, that they would be automatically excluded unless we approve of them.
Erica?
So I'm looking forward.
I'm just wondering, from a staffing perspective, how would all this be monitored and checked? And, you know, we don't have tax attorneys on staff and it, I don't know, I, I just worry about the the staffing and, and how.
Well, I think you'd be.
When, when this is more complex like this and broad, it's, you know, are we gonna have John Giorgio do every single check?
Right. Oh, well, that's not gonna happen.
How hard is it to have a question on a questionnaire saying, how do you, what is it, how do you file your tax return? What tax form do you file? You're not asking for information about dollars and cents from it, but do you file the partnership form? Do you file the regular 1040?
That would be more like on the honor code.
Change news and.
Stephen, Maury?
Yeah, Tom, I think that maybe this is a discussion that doesn't need to happen at this work group. You know, if our goal is to try to come up with a compromise article that's gonna be sponsored by the Select Board, and if Ms. Perrin is not interested in that, then maybe we can submit questions to her that might be beneficial to, to refining that article, if she would, you know, like that. But this work group can return to the discussion and the negotiation to hopefully lead to a single article that the Select Board will sponsor for this town meeting.
The other possibility would be, Pamela, to include your definition of corporations, your new definition, put that into Chapter 60. Stephen, go in. Do you have an issue with that?
I'd have to look at it, but that's probably safer.
And there's nothing, and I like Stephen Maury's approach. We have a lot of work to do here on the, on the fundamental question of how are we gonna regulate STRs? And so rather than get bogged down on this, Pamela can proceed. She's gonna have to appear before the Finance Committee and this, probably the Select Board to defend her article. And I, I don't know if, yet, I see Denise is on the line. I know from experience that there's a lot of expertise on the Finance Committee. And, you know, maybe you can convince the Finance Committee that this is the best approach, notwithstanding Stephen's concern. You know, maybe you can convince the finance committee that this is the best approach, notwithstanding Stevens concerns. But I would maybe say we should leave this to the finance committee. To have a fulsome discussion and make a recommendation.
Okay, unless, unless Ms. Cronow has any comments, um, I think we'll close this, uh. This part of the. Meeting for tonight. Pamela, thank you for coming to explain your article and, um, we'll, we'll, we'll see what happens.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, Steve. If I get, Stephen? I wanted to say one night thing, but I just read the definition of corporations and it, it seems. Like if there's some, there's some meat there we might want to chew on.
What are you reading?
Their definition of corporations.
Okay.
Yeah, so that one actually looks like it might have some stuff that we could use. So, but I think going to the finance base, the right idea.
Okay, thank you for your time Pamela.
Thank you.
Good night. So Erica, may I please ask you to put up John's composite article unless anybody has anything before that? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, sorry John.
One second, Erica's just going to adjust.
Stephen Maury, can I borrow one of your babies for town meeting? I think Sean Do got a lot of points with his baby.
Sir, I've got extra. They're loud.
That's not a baby, that's a big boy.
Yeah.
Um, Ms. Benz.
Um, he could like be as mini me of his father, by the way.
As the voice of the voters supporting Antucket Neighborhoods First, I feel obliged at this point to advise the select board. The Danup supporters have become dismayed because of the process of this work group today and the first tangible outcome of John Georgios' draft article. While we realize that it was a draft.
Can you speak up? People can't hear you.
We'll start over. While we re, yes?
Yes, that's fine.
Definitely can hear. All right. As the voice of the voters supporting Antucket Neighborhoods First, I feel obliged at this point to advise the select board. That we and our supporters have become dismayed because of the process of this work group debate and the first tangible outcome of Mr. Georgios' draft article. While I realize that it is a draft, the process was supposed to result in a compromise S T R article. This, like what we are trying to accomplish, appears like a very rushed work plan. We gathered far more than necessary signatures for our accessory use article. And at the request of the select board, we agreed ahead of the work group processing this date. We spent hours of preparation and discussion when yesterday Mr. Georgios sent a draft article. Which did not even, did not include even one of our credible positions, provisions. In fact, none of them, much less considered, even before the meetings began. We expected this could be based and had little hope it was successful, nevertheless, we decided to disavow it. Our priority has been and remains to protect residential neighborhoods from investor exploitation of the deserved quality of life. No one wants an S T R mix still. But this process, perhaps due to speed, has failed to take these concerns into account, so we're focused on protecting investors and their financial decisions and futures. Now that we are nearing the end of our allotted time, we feel it is important to set forth a minimum requirement of our group of voters, these include. An owner residency requirement is set forth in that article. We have some flexibility regarding the number of S T R days in that division. And it allows an minimum 28 days to S T R and a term of 32 days of residential occupancy for everyone. Two, the article must be an honest accessory use article and there must be an A in the use chart, something we have maintained from the outset for Mr. Georgios and to decide should be ignored. The article must use accessory and principal use in other well-defined terms and may not sound illegal. At the outset, those terms were included in all the articles, but have now disappeared altogether. We understand that other people at this table may have priorities other than ours. But we represent voters and others who live on and visit Nantucket who are deeply concerned about preserving the neighborhoods and the quality of life. If it's going to be a barge. We will continue with this process for now. But we want everyone involved to know where we and us understand on this process and the very important S T R issue for you.
Matthew.
Uh, I just want to follow up with what Charity said and so really, you know, I fully support her statement here and. This isn't just coming from Charity or Charity. Can't talk today. Charity and I, you know, we've heard from a lot of our supporters. And, you know, much like the many emails that we've received are, are concerned about the process and things like that, so. We really want to bring it to the table. We just want to give you guys a clear cut, no BS, you know, this is kind of where we stand. This is where our supporters stand. This is where, you know. Uh, uh, we're, the feedback that we're gate, getting from the community. So. You know, we're, we're not trying to put a wrench in everything, but we, you know, we are getting, we're starting to get very short on time and so it's kind of. Kind of kind of lay our cards on the table. So.
So. May I ask what your intention is moving, given this letter and the statement, what your intention is moving forward?
We are going to carry on. For now, that's what I'm saying. And. But we. I don't think that our article has. It's, it's been steamrolled and right from the first, the beginning, and I think that Mr. Collins is sort of. Running the show here. And, um. And we.
I, I haven't noticed you being signed either.
Let's, let's not, let's not, really, really, let's not.
I have been happy.
One, one time, please, thank you.
We have been happy to participate in the discussions about. Narrow some of the issues that are before us. But, um. I want to reiterate that we are a neighborhood and accessory use article and that is to secure all the other parts.
So just from me, kind of whatever. Being the moderator or whatever, chairing these meetings, I thought we got to a point where it was clear that based on the planning director's definition. Of what an A in the use chart would mean. That legally that was, and town council's opinion that that was not possible and that this compromise definition. Is basically the same thing as an A in a roundabout way, based on whatever else is in the code. That's where I thought we got to two or three meetings ago, but. I, I, I would open it, I would open it up to the group, but I.
So that's exactly where we got to and somebody else who wasn't in the room with us at these past three meetings wrote a letter because they have a different opinion. But that is exactly where we got to and, and, and now if there's a hard line. That where we, uh, reached some semblance of agreement, which was to all sorts of new rules. If, if, if we can't, uh, move forward from that point. Then I don't know what we're doing.
So, I, I'd like to respond, um. First of all, you know, John Giorgio doesn't need me to defend him, but I think criticizing him was unnecessary because he's just doing his best job to try and. Figure out amongst all of us, what it sounded like we were saying. I don't agree with everything he put in here, but I think it was a very fair assessment of what had been on the table. And I'm hoping some of that will change and whatever, like it's not, I don't think, I don't, I hope it's not the final product, but I think it was a very fair attempt. Secondly, you know, I also don't really love ultimatums, but whatever. I, I think where we are is. You know, with all due respect, this is my prediction of what's going to happen. In the next few weeks, the zoning board is most likely going to vote to support the grapes in that decision, in that case. And if that happens, what you will see is essentially every S T R out there will be currently legal with. Nearly every S T R would be legal with no rules. And there are people who would love to see it stay that way. Obviously you don't. Uh, and frankly, neither do I, because I think that there should be. And I think what we need to do is come up with something that tells town meeting, you know what? We have some goals here. We need to mitigate nuisances in neighborhoods, impacts on neighborhoods, impacts on the local economy, impacts on the realis, on, on the real estate market. And dissuade investor-only S T Rs. And I think we've spent quite a few hours putting together rules that try to do that. I'm surprised that you don't agree that that's the direction we've been heading in. Trying to tell people you have to own a property for three years before you can get to a decent amount of S T Rs. That is a huge impediment to investor-focused S T Rs. I thought we actually came up with something that is close to being both simple and effective. The fact that it uses one tool instead of another. Uh, or, or one avenue instead of another is not what I think we should be focusing. I think we should be focusing on the results that we're intending. And I think we're actually, I thought at the last meeting, we were kind of in agreement that we were getting, getting there. I'm surprised that, that. You think we're so far astray. I do, I don't, I don't think this is the final version, but I think it's a good template to start working from. If we want to limit investor S T Rs. I think the best way to do that is to. Allow people who are new to the system to have less S T Rs. The reason why I think having occupancy requirements is problematic is that it. It's invasive, it's potentially unsafe, it's impossible to enforce, it. Creates this neighbor on neighbor situation, it. Creates an incentive for artificial leases and occupancy where you're like paying some kid to stand in line to get your reservation. You know, if someone can make hundreds of thousands of dollars renting out their property, they're going to pay someone to live in their house for 32 days. You know, like.
Let me just interrupt.
Creating, creating, creating something that has no benefit. As a way to check a box. I don't think is a solution.
I think accessory use for 32 days is right and long. With your suggestion. Both of your suggestions. That to engage people in the community. They need. To have, be a junior member.
Yeah.
Okay, but I think asking someone. Who has an investment property here, and we've been reading lots of mail about. What's going to happen. To. You know. Please be glad that we're going to have a really big earful next week. Asking them to come and spend. 32 days on that topic. And make some kind of a commitment to this plan. Is right and long, the same to new owners. You don't want to get three. What's the difference?
It's not about asking about the commitment that you're asking them to make. It's that it has all these other problems with no real benefit. Having someone in that house for 32 days doesn't create any benefit.
Well, if somebody's long-term renting it for 32 days or more.
Grant, I'm going to go to Grant.
Yep.
So. But, you know, I get where you're coming from. Charlie, and, and, and I appreciate you being. Traced by the president, but. You know, I, I think at the very. First meeting, I mentioned that we're going to have a problem because the structure of your article. And I'm not saying that it's flawed. It's just so different from the article that Stephen and we set up with John Georgios' help. Because of the fact that it has the A in the use chart. It's, that just becomes an impediment to compliance. Because it's like saying, uh, let's take the tires off this really beautiful souped-up bicycle and put them on a car. It's just, it's just not going to work. But. What we did at the very first meeting, and I think, I think we can continue to go in that direction. At the first meeting, we all said, what are our goals? And we all agreed on the goals.
Yeah.
We agreed on every goal. So, and then we went to John Giorgio and we said, okay, what's the best way to achieve this goal? Or we said, or we said as a group, is this a good way to achieve this, this goal? Now, an A or a Y of the use chart, as far as I'm concerned. And I may be wrong because I'm not a lawyer and I, you know, have no desire to be the director of the thing. Thank you, Leslie. But I may be wrong, but I believe that an A and a Y in a use chart are just numbers on a chart or letters on a chart. They're not important. What's important is the intent of the legal language and if we create. A new thing called a short-term vacation rental and we create. Rules around that, rules that you agreed with, rules that you agreed on. Uh, and we say that these things are allowed, but not for legal purposes, they're just for members. Well.
So.
So, but, but let me just finish and, and. If we continue to work in that way, I really hope that the three of us can. Can. At least stand up at town meeting and say. We appreciate and approve. Of the work that the select board has done to bring a compromised article to the table. Maybe we don't agree with everything in it, but. I will, you know, I have a feeling that I will be able to stand up at town meeting and say. This gives us 80% of what our original article gave us. And if I can do that, then I, then I will. I will recommend that we, as a group, lay our article down. And just support the select board article. But if there are. If there is two of the people, two of the groups at this table supporting the select board article and you are not. Then I don't think anything passes.
And. I think that's exactly right, Grant, in the sense that we need to not only get to our. Adopt rules that accomplish our goals, but also pick. Rules that can get a two-thirds vote. And I think we also all agree basically in the meeting that none of us can get a two-thirds vote on, on the articles that are written, right? Nobody thinks there are.
I thought everyone did agree to that, honestly.
Yeah, and nobody, none of the, none of the currently submitted articles could get two-thirds. And the difference between, the, the difference between. The occupancy requirements and the junior certificate requirements is I think one could pass and one is a poison pill that will die.
John?
So, uh, folks, I feel like somebody has thrown this train into reverse and, um. Uh, uh, I hope I didn't contribute to the disenchantment by Charity's group because. What I heard. Was. That Charity's group was willing to consider. Going with the Y in the use chart. If the section 38 regulations were strong enough. That's what I heard and I've been proceeding on that basis and I've been herding cats. That's fine. I herd cats. That's half of what I do in my job is I herd cats, but. I think we have to look, now, I, I sat down to try to draft. This composite bylaw based upon everything I heard. I highlighted in yellow some things that came into me after the last meeting. And rather than allowing this thing to blow up because now all of a sudden, section 38 is not going to solve the problem. Let's just go through what I drafted. And let's have a discussion and see where the areas of disagreement are. But I. I'm very strongly recommending that you follow the. Recommendation that I and Leslie have made regarding the use chart. That's not where the problem lies. The problem lies in section 38 and if I didn't capture the consensus of the group, then shame on me, but I think I did. There may be some additional things in there that have to come out. There may be some tweaks of language, but that's where you all should concentrate your time with. That's my opinion and you know what? If there's a group that, that is not going to compromise here. Then the rest of us, the rest of you have to keep going forward. And you know, you, you mentioned. Stephen, you mentioned Grant, you mentioned the select board, but I've been telling you all along, your planning board. Has to be, has to weigh in here and you need to have the planning board have a, and David has participated, Dave Iverson, as has Leslie. But they're your planning experts and let's not lose sight of, of their contribution. So at some point you have to, um. I won't use the one. Term, but I'll say fisher cut bait. Right? And if we have to cut some bait, we're going to cut some bait and then there'll be a big fight on town meeting floor. That'll be very unfortunate. It will lead to an uncertain. Result. But you can't just approach these negotiations not willing to compromise. That's not how negotiations work, period.
Okay, so before we jump into. The short-term rental, vacation rental, uh, number one, I would just say, and not to sound defensive on the process, but. I'm sorry that, that you, that you feel that this was led by one person or not by the group. I. I thought it was being led by all six of you. And I thought we were going pretty well, so.
Can I run through, uh? Can I run through my section 38 changes or? Would that be helpful? Would that be helpful?
If we had to talk about some of them. Let's just take what happened the day after the first, Mr. Collins sent. Let's just take what happened the day after the first Mr. Collins sent him. Two of those, his thoughts.
Can we maybe plow through this and hold it till later?
Okay, but I think, I think that explains, explains my concern, Carter's concern. About the entire discussion being. Sent in a direction. That developed. With Mr. Collins' thoughts.
I, I think this is a distraction, but my memo included. Tons of points from you, from your article that I didn't agree with, we, it was not a single thing that we haven't discussed. There's nothing that you have said, I want to do this, and it wasn't on my list. My, I was just, that was an administrative task, wasn't trying to control anything. I don't recall any, anything being excluded.
Okay, John, please.
Want me to go through?
Yes, please.
Okay, so. Um. What I.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Why did the red card for you?
I, I, you can go all the way to the top, um. Erica. So, um, what I did here was I added a bunch of definitions that I think are. Important based upon the discussion in terms of where the group was going. Um, I've added the definition of cottage colony and hosted stay, which are the same that were in the general bylaw. Proposal last, uh, November. I've included the definition of owner. And operator. Which are also in the general bylaw, and they track, um, basically the state definitions. Um. I added a definition of short term rental, which again is the state definition, and it's this Article sixty definition. And then I created a new definition, and I understand this title, I should have probably put this in yellow, because I know this hasn't been a complete agreement on what to call. Um. This, but I've added a definition of short term vacation rental, which is a basically a short term rental. That complies with the new section thirty eight. So those were the definitions I added. Section two. Amends the use chart. By saying that short term rentals. Are not allowed. In any district. And then in section three, we amend the use chart again by adding short term vacation rental. And it's allowed in all districts except the C I district. Which will have an N designation. And then we add a note, short term rental, short term vacation rental shall be subject to the requirements of section thirty eight. Okay? And then in section thirty eight. The first paragraph. I attempted. To address the issue of. An owner or operator not op- not, um, engaging in a short term rental use. Of more than one dwelling unit. At a time, however. If the lot has more than one dwelling unit, a primary dwelling and a secondary dwelling. May be rented as a short term vacation rental. At the same time. I. I think Grant had said. By the same person, but I understood the consensus was we weren't going to be that limiting. I could have, maybe I was wrong about that, and I'm happy to change it, but that's how I drafted it. Um. Number two is the so-called, um, legacy provision. That if you've operated. More than one short term rental on the same lot at any time. Prior to the effective date of the bylaw, you can continue to do so for a period of five years.
John, Grant has a quick comment.
Yeah.
John, I think I should say, instead of on the same lot, I should say on the Antarctic. Because we're not talking about multiple short term rentals on the same lot, we're talking about people who own multiple properties on the island.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy to make that change.
That's not what I understood.
Yeah, I, I have some notes, but I'm gonna wait till the end of.
Okay, um. Then number three. We're talking about. How many changes in occupancy? Um, and during the summer, it's going to be either six or seven. But then again, if an owner who purchases a dwelling unit after the effective date of this bylaw. Is going to be limited to three to four changes in occupancy in July and August. Number four. Um, this was a provision that Stephen addressed, but my, he talked about it at the last meeting, and I didn't hear anyone. Objecting to that. Concept. Um, so I, I added it in, it's highlighted in yellow because obviously wordsmithing is important. Um, and we want to make sure that if people are generally. In favor of that kind of exception, that the wording is correct. Number five. This was one that we talked about ad nauseam, okay? And just as a placeholder, I put in. Um, no limit. Outside of July and August on the number of changes in occupancy. We need to reach a consensus on that, in my view, having listened to the discussions, I don't think we're at a consensus yet, and that's why I put it in yellow. Everyone agrees with six, I believe, you gotta comply with chapter one twenty three. Number seven, my understanding was you wanted to exempt. Cottage colonies and hosted stays. So I put it in again as a placeholder for further discussion. Number eight, and I struggled with this one, but. The prohibition of short term rentals in tertiary dwellings. Apartments, and that's a defined term in your zoning bylaw, for which a building permit has been issued prior to the effective date of this bylaw. Time sharing or time interval ownership dwelling units or dwellings, that's right out of your general bylaw. Um, that passed, by the way. Affordable housing, workforce, home ownership housing, workforce rental housing, or in a dwelling unit that's a covenant house. So that's how I address that. Um, the civil penalty language in nine. Um, is pretty much the same as in the general bylaw, but it allows a civil penalty for violation of the zoning bylaw. Ten is the, um, severability clause that we discussed, and eleven is. When this bylaw shall take effect. So that's what I tried to do, and I hope I didn't offend anybody or give the impression I was favoring one group or another. I thought we were, this is what I thought was the consensus that, uh, where we were headed.
John, may I ask you a question? So. So we were talking last week about. Some provisions. Possibly going to a general bylaw instead because of enforcement and zoning, it's zoning enforcement as opposed to general bylaw enforcement. I'm guessing that you might have put some of these. Are all these suggested as a zoning bylaw, or, or the placeholder for, so they're all on one page, basically?
Yeah, I mean, I, I do think we want to have significant regulations in the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
Um, but of course, I, I, obviously, I'm open to, if you think one or more of these provisions. Are better in the general bylaw, then we can deal with that. The other thing I sent around today. Was a. Version of chapter one twenty three. That includes all of the amendments that have been made to date by town meeting, not all of them have been approved by the attorney general, but. I thought it was best to put everything in there. Note that we have amendments from Stephen, from Matt Peel, and from Pamela that we talked about earlier. And we're gonna have to need to plow through the general bylaw and everyone's, um. Proposed changes, a lot of what Stephen has in his. Um, are now in the zoning bylaw, but we can certainly talk about where they best belong.
Okay, just a, thank you for the clarification, uh, open up to the group for points on, uh, what John mentioned. Matthew.
Um. So, couple things. I, I think we're, a lot of the frustration is, uh, I think. We understand it is a draft, but we felt like a lot of the wording and things were, were. We weren't. Necessarily agree with, and we were gonna shelf it, and maybe that's what we need to do today is work out a lot of these little points. Um. Starting off, one being the definitions, primary, uh, our group really loves primary and accessory. For primary deferent, instead of short term vacation or short term rental, primary short term rental, and accessory short term rental. Um, so I'm not sure. You know. Why the thought behind that, I mean, it's.
Grant. I'll provide stuff when I do. Since we're putting a Y in the use term. Calling it accessory is confusing people, so I thought that it would just make sense to create this new thing called the. Uh, short term vacation rental. And that then we could say all other short term rentals are banned. We're gonna go forward with short term vacation rentals with these restrictions. And it's, and it's not, I mean, I like the term accessory as well, but. Under the, under what we created here, and maybe it'll change, but under what we created here, there is no accessory use. Because, and the main reason for this is. Traditional customary short term rental activity on Nantucket for the last. Multiple decades has not been accessory use, it's been. People are summer residents who come to Nantucket to enjoy their home for. Three or four weeks, and then they rent the rest of it. So it's, it's, it's sort of critical for us to not harm those people. Uh, by making everything that happens after the date of this passage an accessory use, because the true accessory use is. Is less than the residency use. Does that make sense?
Thanks, it, it, I mean, if, it, as far as where you're finding it is, but. I'd like to know, yeah, short term vacation rent, what is it for the short term vacation? Is that used anywhere else in the state?
Um. I think the, the, what is, what is West District calling? Will they just call it a vacation rental?
I think they do, I know that Palm Springs started a lot of that on vacation rentals, and they index this as a short term rental. Great, they defined it as an ancillary, that's the term they use in California. And it's defined by exactly the sorts of regulations, so we're trying to come up with now. As I mentioned, they, they stopped having a residency requirement because they couldn't enforce it. But, um, I, I just want to say on that topic for just a second before we get to a number of points. Charity that, that we, we started with a residency requirement because we want people to have a connection to Nantucket, we agree with you on that. But we found out for three reasons that it. Just wouldn't work, the first was enforcement, you know, we know that. Palm Springs has a legion of enforcement people. It's a big city with a lot of enforcement, they couldn't do it.
What do they do on their tax returns? Schedule A.
I'm not sure, but can I go on and?
Yes, you can.
Now, the second reason is the potential with commerce clause problems, we know, we've heard from a number of, you know, we, we worked with Peter Kahn on the S T Rs, it. Excellent lawyer, he's convinced, as is Peter Howley, that it is on commerce cause violation, even if we allow rentals to count toward it. And the, and the, the third is, uh, I think in this is sort of covered in accessory that. It does seem to, uh, make it difficult for some seasonal families, especially if, if the owners are older people. Who can't make it to Nantucket for those X number of days. And. Our hearts are with you on connection to Nantucket, mine are too, in my neighborhood, I know the S T Rs that, that bother us less, the owners are around. But we didn't feel that was the way we could do it, we simply could not do it that way, it wouldn't be enforceable, it might not be legal. And it might discriminate against some of the families we cherish the most, so we're trying to do it with these other ways with limiting new changes of occupancy for new. New owners of property, and I mean, we probably would rather have to start with license, by the way, Steve, but that's why, that's why. That's why we, we changed, we've dropped that, we were with you on having residency, but we don't think it can happen. And, and I'm asking you to come with us on that, because. We, we're in the same place on it, but we can't do it your way, because we, we were told it won't work.
You know, I think we're being told a lot of stuff that people want us to believe, and that may not be the case. Um, I'm referring to the. Uh. What George, uh, with John sent out, I think. Um. In a proposed consensus, or was that you, Stephen? Um. I think it was probably you and, uh. Grant's comment was in green, investors don't just have an impact on neighborhoods, they have an outsized impact on our industrial economy. And if this had to do with. Uh, always excuse me, we're talking about these terms, I'm very sorry. Is just calling this a short term rental sufficient, this was Grant's comment. I'm wary of creating a new term for what has occurred and has been defined before the Vay ruling. And then, John, I wrote to you. In it, in red. Grant was in green, and I have not received, uh, well, actually, I, I wrote to Stephen, but I copied you. Um. Introducing new terms that can create ambiguity and loopholes is dangerous and leads to gamesmanship, that is the problem we're experiencing now, experiencing now in the aftermath of the land court decision. Um. Let's do the best we can to work with definitions that have gone through legal channel. And survived, so that's why I'm asking. Who? Who else in, in the Commonwealth uses a short term vacation round, and have they had any problems with it?
I'm not sure the name. Has any legal.
The name, no, no, the name does not matter, charity, okay? It doesn't matter, you can call this anything you want. But, um, the, the important thing. Is that you want to distinguish between short term rentals that comply with thirty eight. And those that do not, and those that do not. Are short term rentals prohibited in all zoning districts. Now. Uh, you know, and I, you know, I have been receiving. Multiple, multiple emails every day. And I've been trying to draft these, these, um. Uh, I, I've been trying to draft these bylaws, and unfortunately, we have to have a discussion at these posted meetings, that's the way it works, now. What would you propose we call short term vacation rental? I don't think hosted stay short term rental really applies, because that's a very different kind of thing. And that's why I added. Your, the concept of a hosted stay, I added that definition, and I exempted it from these regulations, I don't know. Are you telling me that's not what you intended? I, I heard loud and clear at the last meeting. That people thought if the host was. Uh, residing on the premises, that it's not a problem, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't regulate that. That's what I heard.
Okay, so the group, I, I'm a little leery of throwing out all the progress we made here, getting hung up on one thing that. I thought we had consensus on.
Yeah.
That, to me, this makes total sense after the planning director, the chair of the planning board, town council, et cetera, said this definition works. To me, and, and, and after listening to this and going through short term rental work group with Jim Ettoal, John is here too, that. That this is, this is the compromise to A, which is not going to work legally.
Yeah.
So I, I just don't think. I, I don't want to shut down debate, I'm not trying to be heavy handed here, but, but to me, this is the way forward, if we're gonna, if we're gonna get sixty seven percent on town meeting floor. Based on whatever's else in the regulations, and we can fill in these gaps, this is the way forward. So, uh, Stephen and Matthew.
So, you know, I had suggested calling it short term rental limited and short term rental unlimited, and banning the unlimited and allowing the limited, but I actually think John's. Sounds a little nicer, you know, vacation, we could call it like cats and balloons, I don't really care, I, it's what's in one thirty eight that matters, so I'd suggest we move on from the name.
Yeah, I, I just. You know, I think our main concern with that was, it's basically kind of like time share and time interval ownership. I mean, how was Picasso able to slip in here and start owning, because they call it what, time interval ownership? So it's just these little loopholes that we want to make sure that we are closing.
I think it's nothing, it's not.
Time shares are a different part of the law, right?
Yeah, it's just a different thing. If you want to address that, you have to address what they do, not what they call, it doesn't matter what you call it, it doesn't, the label isn't significant.
How is the ownership different from time shares on the, is that?
And that.
Okay.
Definition of time shares, it, it currently exists in the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, right, so John. Yeah, right. So John, we could, I, I actually have some relatively simple questions or notes on, on John's case. Do you mind if I run through them? Um, on cottage colonies, I just have a question about. What about non-seasonal lots and what about lots with, with three or more dwellings that are historic? Um, but I guess my question is, is that, is that cottage colony definition coming from somewhere already? If it's, if it's not.
That definition was, um. Uh, was a, a recommended last fall.
Yeah.
By both Judy Barrett and I believe Leslie, and it was what we included in the general bylaw last fall. Um, same with hosted stay. And so I, rather than re-event the wheel, I just took those definitions that we were vetted last fall. And put them into this bylaw. I don't know is, if Leslie is on. Now, I know she has to leave early, um, but I would, I would ask Leslie whether she has an issue with those definitions.
Yeah, uh, I guess my note is, I don't feel strongly about it, but because you're allowed two dwellings in most places, I'd probably go. Start at three instead of four. And, and I'm not sure that the seasonal basis is a requirement or not, but you know. I don't know if we need to get caught up in that definition at this meeting. Um, I just sort of, I, I guess I'd rather just throw that note out there and we could sort of deal with that. If, if, if something moves forward, we could deal with that. Through the planning board process. I don't think it's an issue we need to debate here. Um, on hosted stays, I think, um, I would recommend adding. Um, that you could have habitation by a twelve month renter, uh, I mean, um. On the land. So in other words, if someone owns a lot and they rent a house to a twelve month. Uh, to someone with a twelve month lease, that that is as good, if not better than having the owner there, that, you know, they're.
Well, it says, Stephen, it references operator. And if you, if you read the definition of operator, it includes a lessee.
Okay, perfect. Um, but the lessee would not have the lessee rights on the other unit, I guess is what I'm saying. I think under operator, the lessee would have to have control of the whole place. So if I'm just renting the cottage and they're short term renting the house.
But this, it, it, it refers to. A dwelling unit where the operator is present and the operator can be the lessee. It's one.
Yeah.
Well, unit on this. On this, on, on the hosted day definition.
Uh, again, we could, we could move on. I'll, I'll take another look at it. If you're, if you're right and I'm not suggesting you're not, then great.
Great. Just quickly, I sent Mr. Giorgio a, an idea on. How to, you know, it was originally to update the hosted state definition, but then we realized it was something different. And I don't know if John, you had a chance to take a look at that, but, um. But it's supposed to make what Stephen is suggesting, um, more palatable to everybody, especially the voters. So if you want me to read that now, I can read it.
I, Stephen has some, let's just continue going with the questions.
I, I, I guess what I would say is like refining the language is something we don't need to do here. If John is saying he thinks that what I'm saying is already included. We don't need to go on it because I think everybody is probably okay with the idea that twelve month renter is as good as an owner, right? Okay, um, in the definition of owner, I guess I have the question of whether or not if there are multiple owners, are we then applying? This, um. The, the burden of ownership against all of them. Right? I think that there needs to be some, if we're saying that each owner. Gets one short term rental property. I think we might need some clarification to say that. That there's like a, it doesn't, doesn't, the operator is really the person we're, we're concerned with. So like, so for instance, if my wife and I own a property, what we've talked about here is that I would be able to have one property and she would be able to have one property. And we're not counting against.
Owner, owner includes a single person.
Yeah.
A marital unit.
Can you move that up a little bit?
A group of, um, people.
Yeah.
LLC or a trust. That's right out of the state definition of owner, uh, in sixty four G.
So, so I, the definition of owner is fine. What I'm saying is when we get later into it. When we're saying you can only have one, it shouldn't. You shouldn't be limited by be, by being the owner of, the partial owner of multiple properties. So like if my wife and I own two properties. I think what we've said is, and we don't, but if we did. I could have, I could have the STR rights on one and she could have the STR rights on one, but you, despite the fact.
But, 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 but Stephen. The definition of owner refers to a dwelling unit, owns a dwelling unit.
Yeah.
So if you own one and your wife owns another dwelling unit, those are two different dwelling units and they may be short term rented.
But if we own them together. That's what I'm worried about. I want to make sure that owning property jointly doesn't mean you're knocked out.
Of what? You're knocked out of what?
Of, of having two. If we have said that a couple can have two different properties. The fact that they happen to own half and half, both shouldn't be a problem.
Is there a way to designate the owner? I mean, the operator?
Yeah, I think maybe by going with operators, we do it. Uh, then. In, uh, in number th- three of the short term vacation rental definition, um, I don't think we need that note anymore because I think that it's. Um, the definition is redundant, is redundant of the note. But again, that's just a drafting thing.
I, I disagree with you, Stephen.
All right. And again, I don't feel strongly about.
If you're gonna put, if you're gonna put a Y in the use chart, you better damn well make sure. That everyone understands that you have to comply with one thirty eight in order to be allowed as of right.
Yeah, but isn't that in the bylaw or, I think, I think it's in here twice, is what I guess I'm saying, but.
We're talking about number three with, we're on number three on page two, charity.
John, I'm gonna hold for a second, go to Leslie.
So, okay.
Where's the note? It's page one.
This is page one.
I don't have, I didn't make a.
I have a question about the operator or, or not operator, hosted stay definition. Can we scroll back to that? And, and maybe I'm confused because I don't have my notes handy. I'm, I'm kind of mobile at the moment, but. Um, hosted stay, I thought at the last meeting, or maybe it was in an email, we talked about. Um, the owner had to be on the site and present, not in the same dwelling unit. So if you had a. You know, a main house and a garage apartment, the owner could be in the garage apartment. They didn't have to be in the main house with the renter. So it's a, I don't think that's what the definition says though.
That's your definition.
Uh, John, I guess if you look at the definition of vacation rental, the first thing says it'd have to comply with one thirty nine thirty eight. So, but if you think it needs the note also, I, I don't, I, I don't care.
Jim, just a quick question while we're on ownership, Steve, without permission. Um, John. In order for someone to define themselves as the operator or whatever of the STR, is there a percentage of ownership they would need to have? I mean, I just don't know how that would work and, and that may be an naive question, but if they own. Twenty percent if they own a quarter percent, is there some, is there some legal definition we need to have for that? Or is that something that simply won't come up?
That only works one direction. You know what I mean by that? Well, personally as a person.
So, so, um. Are you talking about two people that own a. Dwelling unit either as tenants in common or tenants by the entirety? Are you getting down to that level of detail?
I, I may be getting down to more level of detail than you want, but I, um, I think. The concern would be what if someone sort of. Owned a number of properties, they owned, let's say ninety six percent and they gave four percent to each of these other people. Could those people that owned the four percent then STR them and have all these, you know. Numerous people doing STRs, whereas the, the main owner is owning ninety six percent of them. That may be a ridiculous example, but it's the sort of thing.
Yeah. So I'd like to know, I, I, um, Jim, what the ownership vehicle is that you're talking about. So that's what I'm not, I'm not.
If I knew that, I'd be sitting in your chair. But I, that's why.
I mean, owner is, so if it's an LLC, right?
Let's say it's an LLC, okay.
No, all, uh, the only thing we say is that an LLC, um, must be composed of.
Natural persons.
Natural persons.
And then in LLC.
But it's, but that is the unit, that is the entity.
Yeah.
That is engaging in the short term rental. So I don't understand why it makes a difference.
So it doesn't matter.
People, no, I don't think it does. If people own five percent or ten percent or, or sixty percent. It's the LLC that's the legal entity that is engaging in the short term rental. Entitled to one.
Grant.
Uh, John, I think the technical question is if someone were to set up an LLC and I have. Friends that have an LLC with their siblings and they all rent a short term renter, short, short term rental. But could those same people set up fifty LLCs? And rent fifty short term rentals because the entity is an LLC and it's separate and distinct from other LLCs. Under our definition, would it be possible for those people to game the system and set up fifty short term rentals?
Does that happen?
Uh, no, I'm just.
No, I, I actually agree with Grant. I think that's, that's easy legal advice I would give my clients, which is why I think what we actually need to do is. Is have a person designated in, as the person who's limited.
The natural person.
The natural person.
Right. I agree with that too.
Because otherwise, people would just do exactly.
Right. We don't want to open that door.
John, we've all heard rumors that there are. Hordes of investors on our shores waiting for us to come to a decision on this thing. So that they can game the system and jump in and, and take over our economy.
I, I think we could work on the language, but I, I wanted to suggest that what I heard as the agreed compromise was that it would be. One person, one property.
Yes.
Right. So that's if the, and if you are a married couple, then you can have two. And if you're. Family of six cousins, you know, whatever, you can have six.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay.
That it, but it, but, but what we would do is come up with a way to designate that this property is this one person and that person cannot. Do the other one, even if they happen to, oh, oh, happen to have a partial ownership, right?
Exactly.
It's not about, not about ownership and it's not about legal entity because that's the loop. Those are the, one is too restrictive and one is open ended. But a person is a person.
Charity.
Okay. I may be incorrect about this, but I understand that the Copley Group. Uh. All of those properties. Were owned by members of the family in LLCs. So what is to prevent? A family. Just, you know, you have. And I think. Grant was right. What's to prevent? The husband, the, the grandfather. And the grandmother. And then the three kids. And then, you know, just essentially creating a portfolio of these properties. Because they're an individual ownership and then being able to STR all. All in the family.
Well, do we want to discriminate against families or do we want to discriminate, discriminate against?
Investor.
Investor owners that are pooling money like, like, um. Pamela talked about.
Yeah.
But do we want to get these pools of investment money out of Nantucket in some way?
Yeah, I do.
So, so, right. And so if someone's part of a large family, those individuals should have the same rights as if they were simply individuals who were not in a family. But I think that's what Grant's saying.
Yeah, being related to someone who has an STR shouldn't prevent you from having an STR. I, like, I can't have one because my dad does, then.
And let's face it, the barrier to entry is high. Yes, it's not easy to, to get into this market.
Well, or the easy barrier, the, the less expensive barrier to entry is generally generational inheritance, which are people who are already like, you know. Here.
And that's later in the hour.
Mr. Maury.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that in addition to there being a natural person attached to each STR. Uh, registration. The natural person should also be at least a partial owner of the entity that owns the property. It can't be. You know, it. Yeah, yeah, it can't be Stephen Cohen a hundred times or somebody in a very large law firm. You know, just designates every one of their associates as the, as the designate. It's gotta be somebody who actually owns the property.
Right.
John, does any of that make sense? From a drafting perspective?
I'm not, I, frankly, I'm not following it. So, so I'm gonna need some help on that one.
All right. So, so an LLC owns the property and, um, and, and then we decide that we're gonna have our attorney. Uh, put their name on the STR registration certificate. Because the, that, because the two partners in the LLC, they already have each one STR permit.
Right.
Yep.
For a third. So that doesn't work. Because those two people essentially have exceeded the limit.
Right.
Yeah, I think it has to be one person and that person has to be a partial owner.
Okay.
If I could make a suggestion then. Um, why don't we look at section H? Of the general bylaw. One twenty three, because I, uh, I think you're, I, 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 I think. We don't want to load up the zoning with too many what ifs. I would much prefer to see that. So section eight says. Short term rentals are prohibited in dwelling units owned by a corporation. Short term rentals are permitted in dwelling units owned by an LLC, trust or S corporation. Only when every shareholder, partner or member of the legal entity is a natural person as established by documentation, et cetera. Are you talking about adding a sentence there? That limits. The.
I don't.
That limits an individual, a natural person from being. A member of more than one STR, uh, more than one LLC?
No.
No, it's on the opposite.
One person could have fractional ownership in multiple entities that own STRs. But each STR must be assigned to, or, or have one natural person. Uh, who essentially owns or is responsible for operating that.
And can't own, and can't be the designated for any other.
Right.
Charity.
Okay, on the residential parcels list now, when you go down through the owners. There are attorneys. There are all sorts of REITs. And all of that is going to have to change. Because you have. Uh, if you're going to list the owner, which I think is a good idea. Then some of these, uh, properties that have. For example, Stephen Cohen is the owner, um, or. Any, it, it's just the way it goes. Sarah Alger and some other people who are.
Yeah, I, I don't have any beneficial interest in those properties. I just the record title holder.
But I mean, where is the name of that person going to show up?
So, so I would suggest that when someone registers for a certificate of registration. That that natural person can only get a COR on one legal lot, which is a defined term within the, uh, bylaw. And so once Stephen Cohen has used up. That I, I can only get it at my address, um, whether I have one house or two houses or a cottage or whatever, it doesn't matter. And then I also have to be a partial owner of that property so that I can't just be what's called a straw, which is someone who is just like. You know, paid to be the, you know, have their name there. And so you have to, and then if my wife and I have two properties. She, she could be the designated person for the second one. And she would also have to be at least a partial owner of that property. And I think that is the simple way, and it doesn't matter who the record owner is, it matters who the beneficial owners are. You know, the trustee doesn't matter. It's that. Who, who are the, who are the underlying owners? And I think that if it's one person, one property and you have to be a partial owner. That gets us to not being overly restrictive and not creating legal loopholes for people to just have. You know, fifty LLCs, which is exactly what would happen.
Jim. And thanks. And just to back up what, what both Stevens were saying and what John Giorgio is saying too. There's a, a recent case in San Diego where. A guy owns like a hundred and fourteen properties and he got a hundred and fourteen straws, people who did not own it, who were allowed to be the. Called the operator and therefore operate the STRs. But doing what Stephen Maury said, no, it's got to be someone who owns the property and, and the way we're all talking about it will limit that. And I think that's sort of the thing I was trying to get at John Giorgio. So I, I feel like it circled around to my question. I apologize. It took so long, but. Ownership is, is, it's, it's an important loophole that we want to make sure is, is in place. It is correct.
Uh, it continues, it continues though, to be my recommendation that we address that in the general bylaw in subsection H.
Everyone okay with that?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
And if anybody wants to propose some language when we get to the general bylaw on that, I'm happy to look at it. I mean, I, Stephen, I thought the LLC is the owner.
So the, the LLC, yeah, the LLC is the owner of record and then ownership. I mean, technically an LLC itself is a legal entity. So, but then you'd be looking at the underlying owners, um, members to see where the beneficial owners. Um, but in that case. We don't really, I mean, I think the worst thing we could do is use LLCs because there, you could just have a million different LLCs and it doesn't, and we wouldn't be looking at. At who the owner, who the underlying owners are. And what, that's what we really care about.
Matthew.
Yeah, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, again, you know, the staff perspective of this, of the enforcement and the verification behind it. Is that something they could do through like registry of deeds? I mean, how do, how do you? Picture the verification process going?
So I think that we would probably create a category called like short term vacation rental designate. And that person would be the designate for that property and they could not be the designate for any other property. But at the time of the license for registration, they would have to prove that they are also an owner. Um, which I get, I, I.
What does that mean is also an owner? The LLC is the record owner of the property.
Yeah, but you could be the beneficial owner. Our member. You know, if someone wants a mooring, they, they go down to the harbor master's office and say, I'd like a, a mooring and I own my property and, and Sheila Lucy says it's in an LLC. Give me a letter from your lawyer saying that you're, you're a member of the LLC. I do that all the time.
I mean, that, that gets to the heart of the whole article sixty and the ban on corporations and making sure that there's natural persons attached to each entity that owns property.
Yeah. Oh, John, I'm happy to write something up for you. That might be easier if you could read it. I know this is a lot to do on the fly. And. Great.
What I would especially appreciate. Is when we, as I said, when we get to one twenty-three, add some language.
Yeah.
Subsection H.
Yeah. That what, doing legal work live is very hard. So I certainly have, you have my, my sympathies.
Welcome to my world.
Right, right. Before we leave this topic and, and I think we should leave it, um, but I think it's important that we try to keep this in zoning. Because. You know, this gets to the heart of the issue for a lot of people, which is making sure that there's no way to. Game the system or find loopholes and attach more than one STR to an individual person. So. It seems to me this belongs in zoning, even if that's more challenging, it's worth the effort.
Can, can we hold that and maybe discuss it?
Yeah.
The select board meeting if the chair and vice chair so agree.
Yeah. So the, the, if, if we can move to the next issue, I think that although what John wrote in here is about. Whether or not the primary and the secondary have to be together. Yeah, back in zoning, um. I don't, I don't know if, if what he's captured is my understanding of where we ended up, because I think that we.
What section are you in?
Uh, sorry, it's the one thirty-eight, one. Um, I, I, I thought we had decided that the primary and secondary dwelling do not have to be. Um, in common rental, they could be, it could be either or. And in fact. We may, maybe wanted to avoid large parties renting the whole place. Maybe it was better to have like two families renting either house and the cottage. Um, and in fact, that was one of the reasons why I conceded on my original um. Proposal, which was that people could have two. Uh, certificates of registration was because you could have one property that could have two dwellings. Um, so I.
But, but, but Stephen, the way I drafted this.
Yeah.
I took out what Grant had included. Which was the same person has to be on both rental contracts. I took that out because I thought. Exactly what you're saying is, um. The two can be rented at the same time, but you're not restricted on who. It doesn't have to be rented to.
Not required. Okay.
That's the way this is drafted now, and I thought that was the consensus that was reached.
Yeah, okay.
I think it is. Would it be clearer if instead of saying at the same time, we say individually?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I, I would just say, maybe if you said separately, that.
Yeah, separately.
Separately, we'd probably do it.
Charity.
On that point. John and, uh, and what I wrote to Stephen. Um, and perhaps you haven't had a chance to look at it, but if you're talking about one, the matter of use of one or two dwellings on a lot remains open and requires further discussion. The ultimate objective is to get down to one owner, one STR. Logically, they should only be permitted to rent one of the two dwellings at one time on a lot with two dwelling units. Otherwise, properties with a primary and secondary dwelling. Have an edge over properties with only a primary dwelling, if you're assuming they have to get two CORs for the primary and the secondary. Do we really want to encourage and outcome the results in the creation of more and more secondary dwellings?
Well. Charity, doesn't. Your, your article would exempt, and I think this just came through today, would exempt from all of the regulations we've been talking about for the last couple of weeks. Short term rentals, if they're in a dwelling on the same lot as a dwelling that's lived in for eight months. So now, you know, that sets up a real incentive to create a secondary dwelling.
I, I, I think. I think, you know. I think we change at the same time, this separate.
Can you just leave that for a second and so I can get a response from Charity?
Sure.
We don't, uh, in our article, what we say on lots with multiple dwelling units, the accessory short term rental limits set forth in herein are cumulative of all twenty dwelling units on a lot. And there shall only be one dwelling unit used as an accessory short term rental.
Right, but that's, but, but that doesn't answer the question that I asked, which is about the exemption. From all of these regulations, including what you wanted was minimum stay lengths, and then we went to. Maximum number of changeovers and literally every regulation would not apply to a short term rental on the same taxable lot. As another dwelling that's lived in for eight months out of the year.
When its owner occupied.
No, that's not what you wrote. That's not what came through this afternoon. It was if it's lived in. For uh, twelve months or if it's lived in for eight months by the owner.
I did not write that. I didn't write anything this afternoon.
I, I read it this afternoon. I'll find the date on it. So that's, that's not your intention. I guess that's the more important piece.
Our exemptions are all accessory short term rentals occurring during any time when the lot is owner occupied. Shall be permitted as a right and exempt from the limitations set forth in this provision. That's, that's the exemption that we had and that's been overtaken by hosted stays.
Grant.
I, I get where you're coming from. I just, and this is just a pragmatic. Point. If we tell people that have been renting their main house and their secondary dwelling that they can only rent one or the other. We're gonna get fifteen people standing up at town meeting saying, you are ruining my life.
Yeah.
You're cutting my income in half. I am gonna have to sell my house. Whether it's true or not, that's what they're gonna say. And then town meeting is gonna say, well, we can't let this guy ha, ma, make this guy move off the island because he has to sell his house. We have to vote no. So I recognize that we want to put limits. But I also recognize that we need to get votes and I don't think we're gonna get the votes we need. If someone stands up at town meeting and says. This, this is starving me.
Okay, so you're gonna sell out zoning for votes.
No, I am going to.
I mean, what you're, what you're.
What can pass?
Can I just answer Charity?
Grant and then John.
What, what I want to do is get something passed. And if you call it selling it out, selling out, well, you can call it whatever you want. I, you know, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna call it. Um, being.
Getting two thirds.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna call it being sensitive to the voters. And, and what the voters want and what the voters need.
I think they said what they wanted and may.
Well, they did, but, but there was, but there was, it was fifty fifty.
Jim. Uh, it's just, it's. Grant's underselling himself because it's also about compassion. We've received a number of letters in our packet from people who have rented out both of their homes and they, and they said exactly that. I would tend to agree with what you say, Charity, but sometimes. In pre-existing cases and in, and in this world, these cases exist and. It's, it's not, I mean, this whole process for me, there's some things that I think in making fair rules, some things may slip through that we don't like. But when, when the guiding principle is compassion and fairness, I think that Grant makes a very good point. It's not just about votes. It may well be about that as well.
If it's about compassion, we should. End the meeting right now and leave. Okay, because we're wasting our time.
I'd say it's about being practical.
But, but how can you say to somebody who gets two CORs because they have a primary and secondary dwelling? And their neighbor only has a primary dwelling and they get one? What's there about that?
They can build a cottage if they want.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Is that what we want to encourage?
I, I.
It's a different.
I think it's a high bar to incur.
Yeah, it's a million, it's a million dollar or two or three million dollar investment.
Yeah.
Do that.
Uh, John, do you have any, can I go to Ms. Cronell? I, I thought you might have said something, John.
Uh, thanks, Tom. Um.
Glad to meet you.
All, all of you know more about this than most people. And I know a lot about this from the four years of being on FinCom and hearing this discussion. And listening to this tonight, I don't know how you're gonna get this through the voters, if you make it. Come, I'm, I'm channeling Malcolm here. Simple is better. Less complex is better. You're, you're elaborating on scenarios that may or may not happen, that the average person may not be able to follow. I think this is gonna be very difficult at the special town meeting. In the way it's being discussed now, if. If we can't get to a just simpler, be able to say it's A, it's B, it's C, and we'd like your support for that. So. Just an observation from someone who's a bystander at this point. Thank you.
Uh, so I, I just have a few more notes and um. So in, in one thirty-eight, two. Um, I think Grant already made the, the note that it's not supposed to be on the same lot. It's supposed to be anywhere. So. But also. Yeah, and then um, I'm not sure if we had consensus on the sunset. Um. It, it just seems to me that if we're having unlimited legacy rights for some people, why are we not for others? I, I, I don't, I don't know that I love the, the pick and choosing of the fairness on that.
So what are you referring to, um, Stephen?
So. Well, what I'm saying is, this says if you had more, that if you were an STR owner for more than one lot before, you can continue at that level on those properties. And, but only for five years. But, but we're exempting cottage colonies and saying you can be exempted forever.
Tom is, we, we, and I've, I've said this before and I know I'm not gonna convince you, Stephen, but we really believe, Grant and I and our group, that cottage colonies are a different animal, a different beast, a different thing. And. Sorry, yeah.
Pre-zone.
Yeah, and, and, and I think that the, the debate may be. I, I think having a. A sunset on that is, is a fair thing to people that own more than one STR property. The debate may be how many years should it be? Some may want three years, some may want ten. I think Grant and I feel that five is sort of in the middle and is doable, but I don't know, do you feel that?
Yeah, I, I.
How open are you to ten?
I'm open to ten. I'm open to ten because ten was in our article, you know, when we sent it to John and, and. But I, I wrote five as a question mark after, after ten and John put five in.
Charity, where are you on?
I'm not on ten, that's for sure. And I'm not sure I'm on five.
We're closer to three.
Closer to three. So that's one of those things where.
Things I wrote.
Where if, if we have the good grace to, to keep going together, that um, we'll have to come, you know.
Alright.
So the question is, the question is. Is three years enough time for someone to. Manage their paperwork and get their properties in order so that they can designate an actual real person owner for those short term rentals or. Not short term rent or dispose of their property depending upon how they want to do it.
John.
Uh, so I'm now very confused, okay? Number, uh, paragraph number one. Says simply. That.
Rent two.
You, no, I know, but I have to go back to one, Stephen. Can I finish please? So one says that, um. You're limited to one short, short term rental on a lot. Okay? Uh, of one dwelling unit on a lot, except that. A primary dwelling unit and a secondary dwelling unit may be rented. At the same time on that lot. Number two, the way I had understood it was. There would be a legacy rate that would allow more than one short term rental vacation on that same lot. If we change it to Nant, to say Nantucket, are we saying that you are limited? A person is limited to one STR on the entire island?
Yes.
Yes.
One, one STR prop lot for, on the entire island. So you're not, you're not limited to one dwelling. You're limited to. One property which could have a primary or a secondary dwelling on it.
And.
And you have to be an owner.
And John, the whole, the whole, our whole thinking behind the. The, the sunrise aspect of it is that people purchase more than one property and use them as STRs under different rules. And we don't want to punish those people in, or be punitive in any way, but we, we do want to bring it down to one per person. For them to do it.
So why aren't we simply saying in one? You can't rent more than one, one STR. Period. And in two, we're saying, however, if you rent more than one STR, you have a legacy right to continue to do so for five, ten, or whatever number of years.
John, because it's by property. There's two issues here. We're saying one pro, one person, one property. Now, if you happen to have two, okay, okay, on that same property. Um, that has been allowed, maybe we'll, we'll decide on that. But the issue is for people that have owned more than one property, that's where the, the sunrise, sunset, sorry, comes in. And this is not something we want to allow moving forward, but this is also something we want to respect the property rights. In a reasonable way of people that purchased more than one property and use them as STRs currently. And so to give them time to work through that, this is.
Different. I know, I, you know, I understand that, um, I, I, uh, uh, Jim, I understand that. But if, if I own a property in Matican. And I'm renting it as an STR. And I also own a property in Sconset and I'm re, I'm renting it as an STR. Are you saying I can only rent one of those?
Yes.
Yes. Well, I think what we're saying is.
After five years.
You.
Or ten.
Forget, forget the legacy right now, okay? Uh, what I want to know is, am I gonna be prohibited from renting both properties? Has nothing to do with the number of, of um. So STRs on a lot. You're telling me I can, I can only rent one island wide?
Correct. Correct. Moving forward.
With, with the caveat that actually your ownership is not really the key. It's, it's your, it's the designation as the. Um. As those STR for that lot. So if you and your wife own two properties jointly, you can be the designate for your Matican property and she can be the designate for the other one. Regardless of the fact that you own them.
Okay, so Stephen, with all due respect, you're adding a complexity here that isn't helping me understand. Because I.
I think we actually.
I drafted this incorrectly. If your intention is to say one person. One STR.
Correct.
One, one, a, a.
Yes.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Stephen?
One STR lot. Which may have two dwellings on it.
Or in the case of a cottage colony, it could have.
Or, or others.
Okay, so it's, just bear with me. One STR. Per person.
Do I?
It's, no, it's one STR per person. If you happen to own a lot. That has two STRs.
Hmm.
Then you can rent, you can rent the, both the primary and the secondary unit.
One person, one STR, one property that can be STR. Some of them may have two, two different bars.
Is.
One person, one, one property STR. Yes, that's it. And that's moving forward. That's for new people. And we're trying to. To give reasonable time to people that have more than one property as STR to go down to one. In a legal way that helps them.
Stephen, we go to Matthew?
Sure.
Yeah. So with that though, I mean, we're allowing, you know, family members and a lot, what a lot of these people are gonna do is start sliding these properties into their family members. So why do we even need a, you know, a sunset period at all or. Or give them, you know, two or three years or, or one year or something like that, because a lot of these people who aren't, they're not just gonna offload these properties. They're gonna slide them into their family members.
You, when you say slide them, you mean give away multimillion dollar properties to their brother and cousin? I mean, that's what you're saying?
I'm sure there'll be some sort of clause that. Uh, attorney can come up with to make sure that they don't run away with this property.
But I think we're thinking of LLCs, maybe trusts for children. And I, we think, some of that might take some time, but again. I don't think. We should be biased against people in the same family. Every, one person has the right to one STR.
If you're related to someone who has another property.
Yeah.
But I'm saying the people that are currently all with a portfolio under, under one person or one, you know, entity. They can start, they can start moving them into their family members if they choose to. That's what I'm saying, is we're allowing.
And there shouldn't be any penalty for being related to someone who happens to have a house here.
But that's, that's my argument. I'm not saying there should be, but I'm saying, why do we need to give them any sunset period at all?
I'll, I'll concede this. I don't think there should be any sunset period, but if there is, five years is probably fair.
You don't think there should be any sunset period?
Doesn't it take time to do, send them out? Doesn't it?
Well, because I, I don't think there should be a sunset period because I think that people who made investments under a certain set of rules should have legacy rights on those rules and that we should treat all legacy rights the same. However, if there's gonna be a sunset period. Five years is probably fine.
Parking lot.
What is your, what is your thought, thought?
There's almost time to keep putting.
Yeah, what is your thought on three?
Then that's why probably nothing's gonna happen.
Thought on three years? Is three years enough time for you, like if you had a client that needed to move their properties around, would that be enough time to get everything squared away?
Yes.
I think five seems more fair, you're talking about people that have made large investments.
I know, I know.
You know, five seems more fair.
I mean, it took me five years just to clean out a closet, but you know, that's.
Well, people are motivated, they have to do something like that.
Yeah, John?
Are you talking about in three, changing three to five years?
No, no, two, two leaving it at the way it is.
Two leaves it at five, and what does three do?
We didn't get to that yet.
All right, so two, we're gonna leave it at five years, one, I'm going to say, no person shall rent more than one STR.
Is everyone?
So, if you say, if you say.
Lot because of the commerce laws.
Not, not property.
No, no, wait a second, guys, hold on, hold on. If you say one STR per lot, if I own two lots, I can rent both of them, but I'm limited to one. That's not your intention, I don't think.
Each person can short-term rent on one legal lot. Whether that's, has one dwelling on it or two.
The issue arises, John, with the, with the second dwelling on a lot of lots. If someone is, is short-term renting both their main house, you know, they move out of their main house in the summertime, and they short-term rent their cottage, then, um, we don't want, necessarily wanna penalize those people, we wanna be able for them to have two.
So, if, and I don't mean to, uh, uh, so if I wrote this, no person or other legal entity shall engage in a short-term vacation rental as an owner operator on more than one lot.
Right.
Good.
And then, excuse me, and then I'm going to say, if that lot has more than one dwelling unit, a primary dw- dwelling and a secondary dwelling may be rented at the same time, basically.
No, separately.
I don't like separately.
Well, they don't necessarily have to be at the same time, what if I wanna rent one this week and one the next week? I think they're, they're unrelated.
Right, so I'm gonna just give up and say separately, okay?
Charity?
I like that.
If, if, if more than one dwelling unit on that lot, then they can do a primary, and they can rent the primary and sec- and secondary unit separately. Right?
Correct. Is that okay for a placeholder, for now?
Yeah, for now, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'll clean up the language, then, then in two, um, we're gonna say if the owner operator who previously operated more than one short-term rental on Nantucket at any time prior to the effective date of this amendment, of this bylaw, they can continue to do so for a period of five years, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
On that lot, as opposed to for that number.
Yeah.
It's limited to that same property.
Lot in.
Yeah.
Uh, is it on the same lot, or is it on Nantucket?
No, it's on Nantucket.
If you have more than one lot on Nantucket, you can short-term, continue to re- rent that, those lots in excess of the one lot limit.
On more than, uh, one lot, well, that's how I had it, no, that had the same lot, more than one lot, okay. We don't have to say on Nantucket, because obviously.
If you had more than one lots, you could continue to rent.
More than one, you, more than one lot, then you can continue for five years.
Yeah, but the legacy right is limited to tho- those properties, it's not a numerical legacy, legacy.
Well, let me write that up, and then you tell me how I screwed it up, okay?
All right, John, you do, you do that, do we wanna, we have about seven minutes, do we wanna talk about?
Can I just ask, on this point, on this point, I just had to answer a question, if, if, this is a place where we should say that each the pri- both the primary and the secondary dwelling must have a separate certificate of registration.
Yeah.
Which is what we're saying.
We already say, I'll check Charity, but we don't wanna say that in the zoning bylaw, that belongs in the general bylaw.
Yeah.
And I think it already says that, but I will double check.
Okay, do we wanna talk about three quickly, about the numbers, if anybody has anything new, and then talk about what our expectations are for Thursday, and then adjourn?
Thursday or Tuesday?
So, uh.
Tuesday's all public comment.
I'll, I'll tell you, I was originally at five and nine, and I've sort of come down to four and seven. And what I've been hearing a lot, and I'm sure you've been hearing it too, is that you, you people are throwing out the baby with the bathwater here, that limiting cha- limit, like, limiting that number too low is punitive against people who really, uh, who are not investor-only uh, people, and then essentially the difference between six or seven, or seven or eight, is not really what's disturbing a neighborhood, that, you know, if you, if you, um, if you're li- you know, some people wanna be able to have twenty or unlimited, and that, we don't, we wanna not have this like constant churn of one nights, three nights, you know, like over and over and over and over. That is, that is a huge impact, but if you're essentially at a summer period that has eight to nine weeks in it, in any given calendar year, and we're limiting people, if we limit people to eight or nine uh, weeks in that year, I think we're basically saying you have to do, you know, no more than one per week, although you could do less. And, and I've, I've been inundated by people saying, if you cut that even one or two weeks, you're, you're punishing me, but you're also not really changing things materially because you, the way you pack investors is, is through the other one, not the main one, and it's not a bad point.
Um, Jim, if, if that's right, the grant, I just wanna say, um, I think where we might have possibly agreement is on the second number, the three, which has to do with people who are new, have newly purchased property, or let's say a new license for an STR. I think there's a lot of reason and power for that number, keeping it low, because we are trying to limit investor-only STRs coming more to our islands, if we don't have the residence requirement, I know we're not in agreement on that quite yet, or maybe at all yet, but that's one of our levers that we can really use to keep that down, so I would think we should not raise it above three um, for the new STRs. As far as the first number, I don't know, I think Charity and Matt will.
Okay, just a couple of things on this, if you are going to, if you think you're going to raise the number of rentals in July and August, we would definitely wanna set limits on the shoulder season, and, um, as far as what you have there, you don't have anything in there about what the incremental increase is going to be over time for those people to achieve whatever the maximum is going to be in July and August. All you start with is a three and four, but there's absolutely no guidance in there on how they become seniors from juniors.
Three years or?
My, yeah, my, 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 my thought is, I'm sorry, Brad, is that it shouldn't go up incrementally, it should be three years at a certain level and then go up, because um, I just think that's a better way to limit.
Three years or three, I thought we were talking about changes of occupancy.
Three changes of occupancy for the first three years of a license, do not make it four the second year, five the third year, because I'm, I'm worried that that will encourage investors to hang in, that's why I wanna keep that down low, and that's the number um, I think we can maybe agree, and I think I stepped on your, your.
But that needs to be much clearer in that than it is right now.
Jim, I, I wanna agree with you, that given the choice, I would lean towards giving extra weeks a, a higher number for, for the people that have made that commitments, and being a little stingy on the people that haven't had, don't have their three years in yet, because that's gonna cover all the people that have already, are already in the system, and, and the people who then make that commitment.
What if, what if we said seven for the existing people and two for new investors?
Two, twos, you know, I, I was at five, and I'm, I'm gonna come down to four, maybe three, two.
Would hurt, who would hurt a, an investor short-term rental?
I say we hold this?
So, can I, can I just make a point here? But, let's just talk about the difference, when we're talking about six or seven, and you were talking about eight, let's just talk about the difference between eight changes of occupancy in a neighborhood versus six changes of occupancy in a neighborhood. If there are five short-term rentals in a, in a neighborhood, that means that there will be thirty, thirty separate changes of occupancy.
Yeah.
Okay, if there are, if, un, for six changes, right? But if there are eight changes of occupancy, and there are five short-term rentals in a neighborhood, that's forty, that's, that's a thirty-three percent increase.
I get that, what, one other point on this whole thing is that short-term rentals are actually a tool of an important part of our community, which is sort of middle income, or people who used to be middle income, where they come here and they save for part of it, and they rent for part of it, like, that's, we, we, we really wanna, we don't wanna lose those people and have only people who can afford to basically do it with no rental income. Um, and when you're down to two, you're basically saying almost no renting.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to hold this for Thursday, so two, two, before we adjourn, Tuesday will be all public comment, the groups wanna come. I don't think we'll get into back and forth with commenters, et cetera, but if there's any questions that can be answered easily, maybe we can facilitate, or we can take them for later. It, it's something, something like that, uh, for Thursday, um, if anybody has anything quickly they wanna say for their expectations, but we will wrap on Thursday. We have to close the warrant on the twenty-sixth, we do not have a select board meeting this weekend, we do, uh, excuse me, next, this week, next week, on Wednesday, we do on the twenty-sixth. Um, and we need to close the warrant that day, so at the end of next Thursday's meeting, um, we need to come up with whatever's gonna go, Malcolm and I can bring to the select board, and then we can, but I, I heard from my colleagues last night, or we did it at, at select board meeting last night, that, that the select board, that the four who were obviously Don's recusing, but felt like they wanna hear from this group as much as possible, if possible, as far as long as it's gonna get. And instead of us doing vast amendments or et cetera, you know, there, I'm sure there'll be some drafting things and et cetera, but if we could on next Thursday, get as far as we can, and, and, um, we're drilling down finally on all these, that would be, that would be great.
Yeah, can I have the process and timing question, so you're saying we close the warrants on the twenty-sixth, but when, when was the finance committee and planning board meetings, were they before the twenty-sixth, or did we do that after?
Those are after.
Okay, so that gives us time to.
I think, I think finance committee starts, I know that they have a meeting scheduled for July ninth, but I think they're on the eight, on the STM timeline, it shows as I think Monday the fifteenth.
Okay.
I think this, I think the, from hearing from my colleagues last night, that, that the more that this potential article is set, the better. Like, we don't wanna be sliding amendments constantly, that, that just isn't, I don't think it behooves the the process last time, and we need to tighten it up as much as possible, yes, Matthew?
Yeah, just on a question and something to think about for the finance committee and planning board and stuff. You know, I think Dawn set a good example, was recusing herself, and I'm just thinking, is it, I think the finance committee and the planning board should also maybe look at that, and if there's any conflict of interest, maybe think about recusing themselves when it does come to this article.
I, I will advise any individual town officials, if they need to recuse or not, they just have to give me a call.
Thank you, John. Charity, quickly.
Uh, is it Zoom Thursday, or is it here?
There's in both.
Both Zoom.
Both Zoom.
What, there's this, the Zoom one?
Yes.
Uh, I started with it, and I'll end with it, John Giorgio, God bless you.
Yeah, thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
May I please go have my martini now?
And with that, entertain a motion.
Okay, I will, I am gonna try, i- i- I am gonna write up what changes we've talked about tonight, and I will recirculate, I'll send it to Erica, a revised draft that you can take a look at, and, you know, we're, we are running out of time, so I wanna get that to you as soon as possible.
Hey, John, uh, can we put your adjournment by the same second design?
Second, my own property, you're taking my right of way there.
For five equals ten.